And I ask Madam Clerk to come back as well. Okay, if I could have a ma— okay. If I could have Madam Clerk to post the clean copy of the proposed policy on a sponsorships and name recognition rights, naming rights, I should say. As a background, that Governance Committee spent probably about three sessions going over proposed policy and making a suggestion for changes and et cetera. And what you see right now in the clean copy comes to you with the Governance Committee's unanimous recommendation. With that, if I could ask Mr. Foster to use your next five minutes to briefly explain to us what the policy is about.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. So just by way of brief background, the Virginia Code provides that school boards in Virginia shall develop and implement policies relating to commercial and corporate partnerships and sponsorships. And so pursuant to that Virginia Code authorizing authority, we've put together this draft policy. I do want to remind the board, we do have an existing policy 8170 that talks generally about naming rights of facilities and the process, but doesn't really get into standards for corporate sponsorships, allocation of donations, or the key provisions of the standard agreements that we're going to enter into. Those are all things that this draft policy does. And so just to go ahead and walk you through it, first, under the purpose, section one, because this deals with commercial and promotional sponsorships, corporate sponsorships, the committee has created an express carve-out for parent-teacher associations, booster organizations, and existing individual school foundations, as well as existing sponsorship agreements. And so then into section two, what we've done—Madam Clerk, if you could advance it a bit on the screen to move to two to the top—what we've done is broken it down into categories on the monetary amount. So anything with a value up to $10,000 is addressed in A, and that provides authority to individual school principals and regional assistant superintendents—to superintendent to accept such donations. In B, anything which exceeds $10,000 in value is the division superintendent or designee may accept such donations. And we further provide that division superintendent should inform the school board member for the magisterial district in which the school is located, as well as the at-large members, of any donation that exceeds $50,000 in value and shall inform the entire school board any donations that exceed $50,000 that's not designated for a particular school. And then in C, we're getting into, you know, much higher dollar amounts where we provide the prior approval of the division superintendent and the school board, both is required where we have total value of a donation that equals or exceeds $500,000 regardless of the duration. And so if we had a situation where an annual donation of $50,000 for 10 or more years, that would meet that $500,000 threshold. So another area that the Governance Committee spent a lot of time discussing with me and other staff members was allocation of donations. And so what we provided here is that any monetary donation that's $10,000 or less is retained in its entirety by the recipient's school. Monetary donations that exceed $10,000 will be allocated. Thirty-five percent will be retained by the school. Sixty-five percent will be retained and used by the school division. And donations of goods or services will be allocated in the discretion of the superintendent. Finally, the allocation formula does not apply to in-kind donations. And so then in E, if you could advance it to the next page, Ms. Mulberth. E, we talk about that acknowledgements of donations are of the entity, and there's no endorsement or advertising of any product. We're really trying to avoid this turning into too commercial of a relationship. And one way to look at it is, for example, how public radio and public television do their sponsorships. It's simply a name. It's not, you know, talking about, oh, this week you can get, you know, such and such on sale. It's not going to be that kind of relationship. And then in F, we talk about—this is obviously done in accord and inconsistently with the policy and regulation 8170 that I mentioned earlier. And then we get into the granting of the naming rights in G. And this is where we really lay out the standards that we expect to see in the granting of naming rights and in the agreement. So we're trying to strike an appropriate balance between commercial considerations, as well as the sense of identity of the public education system and our school division. Further, in sub-paragraph three, we're going to provide that each written agreement is governed by this policy, and the Office of Procurement Services needs to review and approve any agreement exceeding $10,000 in value. And then in three, we further provide common provisions that we want to see addressed in each agreement. And so I'm not going to repeat those verbatim, but you can read through them in the draft. And then finally, in four, we list the items for which naming rights may be awarded. So, you know, typically you see this at stadiums, athletic fields, athletic facilities, gymnasiums, libraries, garden walks, concessions or locker rooms. And F is really just a general catch-all that's not covered anywhere else, such other school installations or equipment. And then in six, we provided that the superintendent or principal, depending on the amount of the donation, is going to decide the monetary valuation of each naming right with reasonable discretion after receiving recommendation from the Assistant Superintendent of Financial Services. We provide that he or she may consult with other professionals as needed. So that again gives flexibility to make sure that any sort of naming right arrangement or relationship is consistent with fair market value, and we can look at outside resources to confirm that. And then finally, in prohibitions, we wanted to make sure that we were not going to—we were going to be clear that no sponsorship promotes hostility or violence, obviously, no attacks on ethnic, racial, or religious groups, any—no discrimination is prohibited by any law or school board policy, obviously no promotion of drugs, alcohol, tobacco, no promotion of sexual, obscene, or pornographic activities, and finally, promotion of political parties, political candidates, or political campaigns is also prohibited. So I hope I hit my five-minute mark. Questions?
You did very well. Thank you. What I'm hoping is, what I'm hoping is, after the discussion tonight, that if there's a consensus, to put this as a new business at the next meeting, which is next Thursday, and then have the vote in the first meeting in September. That is what I'm thinking at this point. With that, I had three hands to go up. I had Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Ha, somebody else. I have Mrs. Strauss, Mr. Wilson, not that you did talk all they needed to talk during the governance, but Mr. Nakofex and Mr. Wilson are right. Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thanks very much for making the amendment to the purpose statement. I'm a little concerned that as written, it still precludes PTAs and alumni organizations and foundations. And my reasoning is that it says in existence prior to the adoption of this policy. And so I know that we have a brand-new school coming online in—on Fort Belvoir that would have its own PTA. We may have another school. You know, we've got a number of schools coming online in our CIP, and they will have these types of organizations. So the caveat of in existence prior to the adoption—I think you're trying to say that the sponsorship agreements in existence prior to the adoption. However, the way it reads, it looks like any of those situations are captured prior to the adoption.
Yeah, you're correct, Ms. Corbett Sanders. The intent is to have that apply to sponsorship agreements in existence, so we can tweak the language to make it clear that it's not limiting PTAs that come into existence after the date of the—of the adoption of the policy.
Or foundations.
Or foundations. Basically, everything else that's there besides sponsorship agreements.
And then the other suggestion I would have is that we are not precluding naming of parts of buildings based on non-monetary payments in this, but it could come across as we are shifting to a purely commercial naming. So we might want to add a sentence that says that this policy does not preclude the naming of facilities or places based on—in recognition of the other policy statement on naming.
The existing policy 8170 does expressly provide that naming rights can be granted in recognition of, you know, and I'm paraphrasing, but long-serving or distinguished members. And so certainly, and we can add a sentence to this that reiterates that.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, let me ask whether there's a general agreement on, and then what Mr. Foster is going to do per Ms. Corbett Sanders' request, suggestion. Is that—is there a general agreement with that? Okay, raise your hand so that—okay. Right, thank you. And I have Mrs. Strauss to be followed by Ms. Nakofex.
Okay, I assume that if a school names something in recognition of monetary donation, that that doesn't necessarily mean that we go through a ceremony at the school board. It's—I would assume that the school board having a lovely recognition ceremony for someone who has passed away, you know, a devoted teacher, et cetera, those kinds of ceremonies.
Those will continue, but not for the commercial part.
Yes, so in other words, for these contributions, these would not come to the school board.
No, they will not come to us.
Thank you. That would be inappropriate. Thank you.
I have—thank you. I have Mr. Nakofex.
My concern was the same as Ms. Sanders', and we've agreed now as a board that—that's what I was wondering. I didn't want this kind of agreement to preclude something like that, and I felt like there had to be an attachment to this to reference the other policy.
Yeah, that was the intent of the Governance Committee's recommendation. We'll clarify that, and John will do that. Thank you. I have Mr. Wilson.
Thank you for indulging me speaking again, meeting manager, Moon.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of other things. And I—I think that although I don't—I don't object to the idea of us voting tonight and moving this forward, I think that this is a policy that we should really all want to get right, because I think it has the potential of ending up in the newspaper at some point later if there's contributions and we didn't do it right. So I want to make—I have read it and reread it again as I was sitting here, and so I do have a few more thoughts. But I first want to start with a question to the superintendent. Can you just discuss and explain, I think everyone's benefit, the magnitude of what we're talking about here in terms of, on just on an ongoing basis, what do we—what happens in terms of contributions to schools where principals are contacted? What's the—just—just so that we understand, what is the magnitude of sponsorship requests and monies that come through, that this policy would govern?
I've not assessed division-wide how much of this has occurred. My sense to date has been very limited.
Okay.
I don't know that we've—we've opened it up to a lot of corporate. There may be some limited—I can think of TJ, for an example, and their foundation. I think they've solicited funding, and I think there's some plaques on different science labs and things like that. But I think it's been fairly limited.
So would it be the expectation that with this policy, then there would be an attempt to raise awareness in the community as a—that that these sponsorship opportunities were available to—as a way to bring in sort of a new stream of money to the schools? Is that—would that—is that something that you anticipate happening?
I do believe that because we've, over time, we've had to rely upon fundraising at the school level to help us pay for things such as the artificial turf, just varied things that are needed at the school. I think more and more our parents and those—those individuals who happen to raise the money are looking to reach out to corporate—the corporate world and environment to help—help with some of that. That's where I'm seeing some—some opportunity here. Now, will it be a windfall of cash? Probably not. I—I don't anticipate that, but certainly at the school level, I mean, it could—I think the only inhibiting factor and something I think that—the board needs to maybe zero in on a little bit is how much is kept and retained at the school level, and how much is distributed at the central office level, and that you may get a little pushback potentially from some of the schools on that particular item. I get the premise, but I just wanted to make sure the board's kind of keyed in on that. And I don't know, Mr. Wilson, if I answered your question very well.
No, you did.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And I'm sorry, the section I was referring to is under a D. I just want to make sure board members noted that.
Yeah, so if you're—if you're not familiar with this—this paragraph D, basically, it sort of is a—is a split, if you will, of funds that come in. And so obviously, when you have a split, you've got incentives that are—that are occurring. And that was something we did discuss quite a bit in Governance Committee, is sort of, well, where do we set these numbers at? And although we did have a unanimous vote, I think that we all would agree that those aren't kind of numbers that are set in stone based on our conversations, so.
You know, we didn't have a magic crystal ball to see what the perfect split should be, but we discussed this a lot, and sixty-five to thirty-five above this $10,000 was something Governance Committee members could agree to.
May I elaborate on a little bit more, if you don't mind?
Yes.
I think—and I—I hope I'm reflecting the conversation appropriately, but I think the concern was some schools would be able to generate quite a bit of money, and then we'd have other schools that would not be able to generate very much money. And so I think the design of this, whether it's perfect or not, I don't know. It was attempting to try to create some equity in the distribution of those—of those dollars. The flip side is, you may—we may hear from some schools that that takes away some of their incentive to go out and seek those kinds of partnerships. So it's kind of a—you know, I'm not sure that there is a perfect solution to that.
Okay. So here are just a couple of additional thoughts as I read it as we were sitting here. One is, there is some reporting in B of that same section of large-dollar items. And I don't remember if the Governance Committee talked about this in detail, but it seems that we should have as a board some sort of annual report so that we can kind of see, you know, what's—what's—what is the result of this policy? Are we starting to see contributions that are coming in? And then maybe that's a regulation element.
I think—if it was simply a superintendent to compile the contributions we may receive under this regulation and just provide to the board member as a part of your superintendent's update, do you think that there was suffice you need, rather than having a policy to do it or regulations to do it?
Okay. Were you speaking of the—of any, despite the—the size?
Yes.
The full range of donations?
So if you look in in paragraph A, it says, "Individual school principals and regional superintendents may accept donations of goods up to $10,000." So, for example, in that case, if it was a principal, would the principal have any reporting requirement up to the superintendent? Or could the principals—and I don't know that we got into this level of detail, but it seems that—it—I guess if this is—if this would trigger more interest in—in sponsorships at schools, I think that—that we need to be aware and have reports up to the—up to the school board so that we know.
I agree with you, and we could manage that through a regulation that would come—that would follow this, or if you want to put a statement in there that the superintendent will provide and a report to the board on the full scope of donations under this policy.
I mean, I would—I would leave that as a part of the regulation and expect superintendent to provide, rather than having that as a policy, and see how that goes. Mr. Wilson, I have—I have six other folks.
I know, I know, and I'm the one that gets tired late at night. But just a couple of other things. Down in paragraph E, if you want to scroll down there, Mr. Foster, yep, okay, it's, "Acknowledgement of donations are of the entity and shall not endorse or advertise." I think maybe we want to put in there "individuals." I don't know that—that would be likely to happen, but I think that we don't want—I think if there was somebody that wanted to, as a vanity measure, put up a, you know, an individual—I mean, we think we kind of picked it up in the no-political advertising, but it's really not intended for individuals, I think, this sort of thing.
You're right, and I think that—I mean, that's—that's an easy ad, and it's consistent, as you noted, with the—the later provisions on political advertising.
Obviously, if it's a business name and it's named after a person.
Right.
Right? Then that might be the exception. I mean, but it's sort of—
I'm sorry to belabor this, because I'm also about to turn into a pumpkin, but this is important. There's a particular individual that kind of keeps pressing us on this, and I will tell you, that particular individual does want us to sell—to be able to put individuals' names.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that—
And I don't know what this board would think about that, but it's—I think it's worthy of, like, at least having a moment to think about whether or not that's something.
Like, I believe Mr. Wilson was suggesting that we put—we would not do any individual person or individual product, right? A person, this particular individual we're talking about, actually sells naming rights, and so he will go out to a family and say, "Would you like to put your—the name of your father on this building?" That would be the name of an individual. So I just—
So I don't guess that—that—
Since there isn't a consensus on that one, I'm trying to move along, that if Mr. Wilson feels that he wants to make an amendment, you can bring an amendment to that, okay?
And then finally, Mr. Foster, I think that in paragraph G, where it really gets into the details of the agreement, I—if you wouldn't mind adding a sentence that said, "A form agreement shall be prepared by—an updated is needed by division council and made available to principals so that they, you know, have a resource." So this is in the—I guess in paragraph G, maybe it's not just G, maybe it's two—two G, granting naming rights, where it talks about the specifics. Am I misreading it? It talks about the specific—yeah, G2 and 3, it talks about specifically what goes in a contract. The written agreement should address the following. So there, it talks about the agreement, and it gets into the specifics of the agreement. And I—and I just, after I read it, I thought, if I were a principal, I'd really like a form that you could start with. It—it's a—you know, I mean, it's—again, I don't know, maybe this is a—
Yes, I mean—I mean, we—I mean, they—the reg—division council already provides those agreements to offer in various different needs.
It's a uniformity issue, that's all, and the board doesn't think it's necessary.
I don't think—I don't think that—I don't think that's needed in this policy. And so I'm gonna—I'm gonna—I'm gonna move along. I have Evans, Shur, Hoff, and then three go-bags. Nakofex, Strauss, and Corbett Sanders. Any other person who wants to be added on the list? Okay, Ms. Evans.
So thank you to the Governance Committee for thrashing through this. I—I know it's complex, and actually, I—I do think I should send people the link to a webinar that—that actually outlined some of the complexities of—of this issue. I have a very basic question, and it comes again in the purpose. When it says, "This policy shall not apply to PTAs, et cetera, et cetera," is that—is that saying that the PTAs can't give out corporate naming rights, that they can't accept money for naming rights? Is that what we're saying there?
No, 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 no.
What does it say?
The corporate—PTA obviously cannot give out naming rights.
Okay. So why—why is it saying that it won't apply to them?
Yeah, PTAs raises money.
Right.
You know, they could get corporate sponsorships.
Okay.
And so their activities do not come under this policy.
So you're saying—okay, so the PTAs can accept all the money they want from corporations that—it just has nothing to do with naming rights?
Has nothing to do with naming rights.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Back to the—you know, the issue of the—the split. I—I see the reason for doing that, and I—I applaud the reason for doing that. I—I think we need to perhaps think about this. I'm—I'm looking at anything over $10,000, there would be a split. It seems to me, then, if somebody was—well, if somebody donated $11,000, then the school would actually get less.
The school could ask them to come under $10,000.
Right.
We talked about that.
Yeah, I'm sure you did.
There is a no-perfect solution. We don't want to make—we don't want to have 100%, 95%, 90% all the way down to—we don't want to do that based upon the amount.
Well, did you consider—did you consider just having for every donation of any amount just a percentage? A percentage going to a central pot?
We discussed that as well, but we—the Governance Committee as a whole, you know, felt that $10,000 was not excessive amount, and give a—a local schools or other people on behalf of the local schools, give them some incentives to raise money. There was the—there was the intent behind giving 100% under $10,000. But again, any of you can bring an amendment.
Well, I guess I—I'm thinking that that might eliminate any attempt to just divide up donations into pockets of $10,000.
And another—another thing is, you know, as we—as we implement this policy, and as we get report from superintendent, as we witness the practices amongst different schools, if the board feels that we should modify this later on, we can always do that.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Shur.
So I—I see the split as arbitrary and highly concerning. I don't know why, rather than work on facilitating relationships with schools, where you're going to punish other schools that have a mechanism for building on those relationships. So to me, I—I think you're starting out at the outset saying, we're—you're going to likely be disinclined to participate in this because you're going to give up 65% of whatever you get. I mean, that's a 65% tax rate. So I—I would not support that number at all. I'd much rather have built into place that you're creating, you know, sister schools or—or something else where you're building relationships to solve that. I'm not exactly sure where—the—and I wasn't privileged to be there, but there just seems to be numbers there. I don't know, 500,000, 50,000—I mean, I—I don't know if—if that—if we have a history of donations that size or—or why, but, you know. It seems like there's an awful lot of figures here at a policy level that seem to drive—drill down to far too much detail, I think, at a—at a policy level. So I—I sort of feel like at this hour, we're like draft phase one, I don't know what the next step is, but I don't know that it's ready to go into, like, launching primetime after a conversation this late at night. That's just my—
Okay, Ms. Shur. I can—in response to your concerns and questions, what I want to tell you is, those numbers, as you pointed out, are arbitrary, but Governance Committee spent a lot of time coming up with those numbers. We did ask our—our staff to look at all the school districts— at other school districts, whether other schools have any similar policies, and we have not found that many. One that was very close to us was a Fauquard. Fauquard County, was it?
It was, actually it was Loudoun.
Loudoun.
Loudoun County had some of these same number splits. Prince William County had some similarities, not on the number splits, but on some other provisions. And you're right, Mr. Moon, I mean, that, looking statewide, there were really just not a lot of other comparators. Other than Loudoun, I don't recall Virginia Beach, for example, or Prince William having number splits.
And there are a couple of members on the Board of Supervisors have asked us a couple of times in public meeting whether we had policy ready, whether policies in place. And the last time I responded was that we'll try to have something before the end of summer.
Okay. And clearly, I'm keenly aware of that. So, and the only other thing I would say is, what do we care? I mean, if somebody wants to give us one point two million dollars and we name a, you know, stadium turf field after them, I couldn't, honestly, I really couldn't care less. So I, I, being more, creating more opportunities for people to give us money than less, all about it.
Okay, thank you. With that, I go to Ms. Huff next.
Thank you. You answered some of my questions, Mr. Moon, just previously, so thank you. I was kind of wondering where these numbers came from. Did we look nationally or only within the Commonwealth?
We also looked nationally, Ms. Huff. I had my staff look at similar sized jurisdictions in the Midwest, Illinois, I mean, really nationwide. And so this draft, and not, and not only Illinois, but Pennsylvania, I mean, many states. And so this draft really reflects kind of the best of what we saw in other policies that we thought would be helpful in our jurisdiction.
And did, did you talk to them not only about the numbers, but then the successes or challenges they've seen with the naming rights and policy?
I did talk to some of our sister jurisdictions in the Commonwealth who've adopted policies. And what they did say regarding their experiences, and I think Dr. Garza got into this a minute ago, is it has not been the cash cow that some advocates had, had hoped that it might be. That's not to say that there have not been some contributions, but, you know, it's not, not been huge.
And so that would lead me to believe, is that just the nature of this doesn't produce that? Or is it because of the way the numbers are set out that it's maybe been more of a discouragement than an encouragement, something to think about? And then I, I guess I have a question about the technicalities of how does it, is there a contract with, let's say a person gives ten thousand dollars and we give him, or I don't know, a, a much bigger number that we give them naming rights to a stadium, that at some point they can get trumped with a bigger amount from another person down the road? Is it, how many years do they have rights to that stadium?
Yeah, that's going to be dependent upon the negotiated agreement in a particular case. What, what you frequently see, Ms. Huff, in in those agreements that we looked at in other jurisdictions, ten years seems to be a common time period, for example, in the naming rights of a, of a stadium or other athletic facility. But that's subject to the individual agreement that's entered into.
And then, I don't need to see it now, but I would be curious to see some of the regulations that are in conjunction with the policies of the, of the other school divisions that you used. For example, I'd like to see what the regulation looked like for the allocation of the donations piece of the policy. I think that that would be helpful to see. And then I, oh, one last question. And if we don't have the answer tonight, that's fine. I know it's late. But how specific is this donation to naming rights compared to the way we receive other donations for just because? Just because a person wanted to donate twenty thousand dollars to the school, but they don't want a name?
I, I want to make sure I understand your question. It looked like Dr. Garza also wanted to weigh in. But are you asking, do we have a policy in place for someone who comes and knocks on our door and says, "I really want to, you know, contribute to FCPS. Here's a check for fifty thousand dollars." Yeah, we don't have, as far as I know, any policy in place that gets into that level of detail.
There are some, there are some regulations that they're much less prescriptive than this, but typically they either go through the foundation or J. Grant's office. But yeah, we do get donations like that.
There's no requirement to split it if it.
No, the distinction, yeah, the distinction on this is you're selling naming rights.
Okay, but.
Essentially.
But if someone wants to get twenty thousand to a school specifically, they can do that without this mandated split? Okay, thanks.
We don't, we don't reject money.
Well, except, but we were stipulating a split here.
We don't, we don't reject free money.
I understand, okay.
I, I would say though, that the only time we do have a somewhat similar split, that the configuration's a little different, is with the Monopole.
Monopole.
And we didn't bring that up tonight. And I think that's.
That the school keeps a much smaller portion, fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent.
Goes to school. Okay, I know it's. Wow, one more hand, okay, Ms. Evans. Okay, let's do this. This is nine thirty-five. We control our own destiny, whether we go home or not. So I have Mr. Narcofax, Mrs. Strauss, and Ms. Corbesens, Ms. Evans. Any other? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Parchett will be the next, before those four. Any other? I'm going to corrupt the list right there. Ms. Parchett.
Quick question. Do we have a sense right now approximately yearly, how many contributions greater than ten thousand dollars we receive or schools receive? So like, knowing, okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Narcofax.
Well, that was my little bit of a concern about ensuring that the reporting mechanism does come to the magisterial districts and how we can get to know, we can know that. Because I, I don't want it to be burdensome, but I do want, I, I do want to know. You know, there'd be nothing more embarrassing than saying, "Did you know that I did this?" And I wouldn't know, you know?
Well, there is a requirement to notify you that's in there.
But that's, if it's only if it's fifty, over ten.
Right, right. We are looking at a database down the road where we will require all contributions to be, so I, I didn't want to elaborate on it tonight, but we do need to have some way of reporting and having schools let us know who's giving them what.
That was my concern, because even under ten would be significant in my district. And I think it's important that, that the magisterial person would know that.
Okay. So later on, is what you're saying, not currently. It'll be above ten now, but it's on your radar for under ten and, or whatever comes in as a result of this.
Mrs. Strauss?
I am concerned about the split. I, you know, I'm kind of willing to let this go forward and see what happens. I think that will dampen any school's attempt to have any kind of a naming right or partnership. We have a foundation already which allows for, you know, donations to the school division. So I think D will put a damp.
I mean, I, I fully appreciate what you're saying.
But I know.
Governance Committee spent a lot of time, a lot of time. And this was an arbitrary but consensus number.
Sure.
You are, you are welcome to propose an amendment if you wish.
I don't know. We could bet anyway. I think it'll put a damp around it.
Ms. Corbesens?
Want to do two things. One, the title of this is sponsorships, commercial, promotional, and corporate sponsorships. That's how it's titled. So it's not really clear in the title that this is limited to naming rights. And so I do ask, I do wonder in the end, when we talk about some of the things that we are prohibiting, I do, most organizations actually take out advertisements or sponsor the programs and things like that during the fall season. So you don't necessarily want a political party candidate or campaign to name a building, but you don't want to cut off that revenue stream for our sports teams during the sports seasons for having public officials pay for ads and things like that. So I don't know how you address that. The second thing that I wanted to mention is, you know, I'm not sure what the right split is, but I would encourage people to understand that all of our buildings, all of our fields, all of our capital infrastructure was paid for by bond money, which came from the whole county. And so I, I do think that there should be some sort of split because there are some areas of the county that will never, ever get the investment to sell a field and others could sell their field three times over. And so the infrastructure for that field, the original purchase of the property for that field was done by the whole county and benefits across the county. And so I do think that especially when you're talking about the diversity of locations, that there should be some sort of split to benefit all students.
Can be Evans will be the absolutely last one.
So I, I'm sorry, but going back to my very first question. There are, in, in, I, I know of several schools that sell bricks, for example. And, and that is money that is, those are initiatives funding the PTA and funding boosters. So I'm thinking about, I, I have at least three schools in my district that have, have brick walks with different names on there. They have companies, sponsors. How would this not, how would this policy then not apply to PTAs and boosters if they're accepting money for things that are part, become part of the permanent, you know, school structure? TJ has one, you know, the bricks out in front of TJ or did before, I don't know if they're still there.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether there is really a naming rights.
Because you, well, if, but if a company, if a company buys a brick and puts their name on there, which some of them do, we have them at Belvedere, we have them at Stewart. You think it's more like an ad than a naming right? So is that how we're differentiating? I'm, I'm, I'm asking the question because I could, you know, if, if our PTAs are accepting money for what is in essence advertising at our school and this doesn't apply, you know, what?
Yeah, first of all, you know, having students' name on a brick through a PTA.
Yeah.
Sponsoring it. I don't think that's a naming right.
Okay, okay.
Other than just having a name on the particular brick.
Okay.
And then, and then P, it's a PTA activities, which is not subject to this.
Yeah.
Which is not subject to this. And, and I, I do not want to tie the hands of all those beneficial activities already being done by, you know, commonly being done by, you know, PTAs through this either. This is to encourage corporate sponsorship.
Right.
Hopefully in the larger amount rather than individual brick with a student names. They will go on even without this policy.
Well, I guess the student names perhaps don't apply, but to the extent that a company is buying a brick to be a, you know, a good partner with a, a school, I guess I just think we need to think about.
I mean, I, I assume that when something like this, you know, large amount of money in burr comes in, they will ask a regional assistance superintendent and division counselor for, for guidance in that case. I mean, I cannot just, you know, craft a policy to suit every different possible situation. But that, I think, if a corporation is doing with hundreds, thousands of bricks, that's a large amount of money. I bet that they will go through a regional assistance superintendent.
So maybe a threshold for something like that.
Okay, again, I'm gonna, with your consensus, whether, raise your hand, whether we can put this as a new business at the next meeting, Thursday, and then vote at the first meeting in September. Thank you. That is amazing, Sir John. And go home and watch your TV.